Still blinking. It's not recording. It's okay.
How dear.
I know her. I play soccer with her. Just calling you out.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, welcome to the July 1st, 2021 meeting of County Council. May I have Peg Faro lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Simba. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers. Here, Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes from the June 17th, 2021?
So moved.
Mr. Heckman, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I have one person signed up for courtesy of the floor. If anyone wishes to speak after that, we'll ask for you to do so. There's five minutes per speaker. And I have Brian Deo. Did I say that correctly? De Ha?
Deok.
Dea. You're representing Asme?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Brian Deok, and I am the staff representative from District Council 88 Asme. I represent the employees of Local 2549 here at the correctional facility. I am here tonight to talk to you about the fine men and women that work in the correctional facility. A correctioner officer's job, primary job, is the care, custody, and control of the inmates in the facility. When hired as a CO, they are aware of the risks that come with the job. Some of those risks involve being verbally assaulted, spit on, have human feces thrown at them, or physically assaulted. These are the daily tasks a CO, CO stands for correction officer, I'm going to use that term a couple of times in my little speech, must deal with. But over the past year, no one was prepared for what happened across the world. Not only did they have all those risks involved daily, they also had to deal with the risk of getting a virus that was sweeping through the United States at a high risk, high rate. Now, while at work, each CO is risking contracting the virus and taking it home to their families. With all those risks involved, they showed up to work and made sure the job was done they were hired to do. The jail administration did not start keeping track of the actual number of COVID cases till the fall of 2020. So I cannot provide a full, accurate count since the pandemic started. But I can provide that since around November of 2020 to today, there have been 184 inmates and over 64 COs that have contracted the virus. I do not know of those 64 COs if any of their family also contracted it by them bringing it home. The jail administration has expressed opening the facility full. But the COs have some major concerns with that for safety reasons and staffing levels. As of today, they are around 23 officers short. Staffing has been an issue for years. It is hard to find applicants that will do the job for the low wages they make compared to other counties. The perception at the jail is that the county cares more about the employees and residents at Greysdale and not the inmates and employees at the jail. Both facilities are 24-hour operations that need to be always staffed. As I previously stated, the COs have been showing up to work, doing their job. Greysdale is getting extra incentives just to pick up shifts and show up. For over the past year, Greysdale is the only facility in the county to continue to get extra pay and incentives, even when the conditions at the jail were worse with numbers rising daily. But again, they showed up and were mandated to stay for shifts that were short. We are aware that the county is receiving $60.71 million through the American Rescue Plan. In that plan, you have the ability to give premium pay to all essential workers, dating back to January of 2020. We are asking you to give some of the premium pay to these COs starting today, July 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021. We are always willing to sit down and discuss further. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at courtesy of the floor at this time? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. McCord, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am, I do. The American Rescue Plan funding resolution before you tonight will take us to nearly 1,000, just a little shy of 1,000 businesses to which we've thrown a lifeline to help them survive throughout the COVID-19-caused pandemic. There are 125 businesses. These businesses were on the overflow list, if you will, from the first round with respect to the CARES funding. So they've been waiting for a long time. And why is it important to act now and act so quickly? Well, we know from surveys that many of their customers are not coming back because they are hesitant. They are hesitant with respect to being in enclosed places with other people. They're not sure whether they're vaccinated or not, so many of their customers haven't come back. They're also having a very difficult time finding staffing. Staffing problems are replete throughout our economy. So it's very important for us to continue to acknowledge that there's a lot of economic hurt out there, especially amongst our backbone businesses, small business, and we have to heal the hurt. We have to finish the business that we started last year with the CARES funding. And tonight, I ask you to take that large step to heal that economic hurt by approving these 125 businesses, I think about $1.8 million, which is going to take us to about 901 businesses that we've helped throughout the pandemic. So I thank you for that. Speaking of our effort, you know, we have Northampton County moving on the right track. And one of the things I wanted to report to you with respect to our collaborations with Easton Hospital and now Lehigh Valley Hospital Coordinated Health, we have performed 6,362 COVID-19 tests. And although we had a couple of days of zero infections, I think yesterday or for today, the state's reported we have four infections. It's still out there in our community. So we are going to continue to be prepared. And through the drive-through vaccination site, we have vaccinated 131 people. So we're going to continue to be prepared to fight the COVID-19 threat that still lingers. And one final thing in my report that I wanted to lay out for you. You know, there are approximately, and I don't have my numbers, yes, I do. So the global war on terror had about 7,057 casualties. Since the global war on terror started, 30,177 soldiers, sailors, airmen, and women have died by suicide who have served in the global war on terror. So 7,057 while deployed, 30,177 have died by suicide who served our nation honorably and valiantly during the global war on terror. And this is, as you heard tonight in the Human Services Committee, Northampton County is on the leading edge of suicide prevention. And now our latest, our latest foray into helping folks with respect to suicide and suicide prevention is our loss team to help folks who have experienced loss. But we're also going to do something for our veterans. And I want to talk about this now. In collaboration with Northampton County Drug and Alcohol, Battleborn, and Northbound, there will be programming from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to assist veterans in their pursuit of their overall wellness and provide them with access to services. And this will take place at the Palmer Recovery Center at 2906 William Penn Highway, Suite 101, Easton, Pennsylvania, 18045. The services available for veterans on Fridays at the Palmer Recovery Center will include peer support groups, professional support groups, MST, assistance with job searches and writing resumes, legal clinics, trainings, VA benefit assistance, onsite drug and alcohol assessments, because so many of these deaths by suicide are related to substance abuse. On-site drug and alcohol assessment referrals to treatment. A certified recovery specialist will also be available onsite. And what we want all of our struggling veterans to know, Northampton County residents struggling with substance abuse can call the Drug and Alcohol Division at 610-829-Help. That's 4357. And veterans can also call the Office of Veterans Affairs at 610-829-4875. That concludes my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. McCord? Mrs. Ferraro?
Okay, I guess my question is, with these fine folks coming here this evening, why aren't the COs or the people at the jail getting the same benefits? Essential workers, Greysdale.
Oh, that's a great question. And first of all, let me just say, they've been fantastic throughout the pandemic. They've done a great job. They've worn their masks. It's been very difficult for them. They've minded their residents. They've kept each other safe. They've kept their residents safe. So they are to be congratulated. Recently, we just agreed with them to a two-year extension of their contract. That extension called for a step increase, which in the first year, which, as you know, is 4.5%, a 4.5% raise. In the second year, the raise is 2.5%. It's a two-year extension. During that extension, there's no increase in their medical benefits. So that has been frozen, and there's been no change in the work conditions. We haven't asked anything more for that additional money. Recently, we've just resolved a grievance with the union, which will, if, which will pay $500 to each of the COs. And then, if you're fully vaccinated, you will get $1,000 if you're fully vaccinated by the end of the year. So that's the compensation picture that we're dealing with.
But I know, I think in our, I always understood people were supposed to get a step every year of career service. And now these people are union, but I mean, I don't know where that went by the wayside.
Well, I think, I think part of, and as a matter of fact, that Mr. Deok's boss, Mr. Tosti, recently suggested to me that we consider cutting our steps. So our steps are 4.5%. We hear this from many organized groups at the bargaining table. Hey, your steps are too large. 4.5% is too large because nobody ever wants to give them. Well, this administration has been, I think, pretty liberal with steps. But, you know, Mr. Tosti's suggestion that we take the step from 4.5% to maybe 2.5% that is something that is definitely worth us considering because that will lead, so I give steps, right? It may not be enough for them. I understand. But I have to balance the interest of the taxpayers
Right.
and their interest, and I honor what they do. I mean, no one, no one has cared more about them. I mean, we've been going overboard trying to get them vaccinated. I mean, we're really trying to be helpful. But back to Mr. Tosti's idea of taking the steps from 4.5% to 2.25,
To be sure they get one every year.
Well, that, it makes it more likely that they will get them, and then they'll be able to move up on the, on the scale.
Which brings the line.
So we should, we should consider doing that in the future.
Absolutely. And what he also said was, we're not paid, we're not paying as much as other counties. I think that's an interesting.
We look at that all the time. With respect to Lehigh County, when, when you put it all together, when you put the benefits, because our benefits are better than Lehigh County's benefits. When you put it all together, we're even or a little better than Lehigh County. Although I will acknowledge that there might be some top-line salary numbers that are better in Lehigh County. Lehigh County's benefits are not nearly as good as our benefits are.
Any other question? Ms. Zirinsky?
Did they get hazard pay?
Yes.
And when did it end?
I don't recall. I could get that answer. I'll get that answer.
Please get that answer first.
Oh, I will. I will.
Because they're asking for back pay, basically, back hazard pay.
I didn't hear that. I did not hear that.
I did.
July.
No, he clearly said.
It's a, it's a, it's a, first of all, let's, let's be clear about something. Hazard pay is a management right. It's not even bargainable.
Right. But they, they, they said that there is $60.7 million that we're getting that could be allocated to premium pay to all essential workers back to January 1st, 2021. So I assume the ask was that they wanted hazard pay back to 2021.
I heard you, may I, may I? I heard you say, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, because I took notes, and that's why I don't look up. You stated, would we consider something starting today till the end of the year, correct? You did not ask for retroactive.
My comment was January 2020, the rest of the plan, let you use that premium pay for that. But I ask where it's starting today.
Right, okay, sorry. That's good clarification.
Thank you.
Is that not something that you would negotiate in a contract, though, with whoever they bargain with?
No. It's not bargainable. No, it's not bargainable.
Because it's.
It isn't bargainable.
Okay.
Mr. Heckman?
I just want to say, and I know you came in, and we all heard you. But Mr. McCord has been up talking about his discussions the county has with, with your, your top man. And part of our setup here is that we have to, we can listen, but everything's negotiated through the administration. That's how we're set up. It would be in your union. If I interjected too far into it, I'd be accused of unfair labor practices. So I, I think that's, that's just something I wanted to point out. I mean, if you see council sitting here, and we're not actively going back and forth in a public forum about this issue, part of that is the reason why. Because in our charter, it's, it's pretty clear. I mean, we approved the final product, but the administration is charged with, whoever that administration is, with, with the negotiations of these things. I just wanted to point that out. I think it's always important.
Any other questions for Mr. McCord?
Can I just ask one more?
Yes.
Did they come to you already? Asme, did they come to you already with this request?
No, not specifically, although, you know, we have a lot of conversations with them.
No, I'm sure, but I'm just trying.
Not specifically.
Okay, so I'm just trying to clarify if they came to us first in a public forum instead of going to you.
Well, I can't say that, but I did not, I, this specific request has not made its way to me.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. McCord? Thank you, Mr. McCord. Resuming old business, we have a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by Northampton County Council amending Ordinance 635-2018, concurring with the City of Easton and the Easton Area School District and providing for property tax exemption for certain additional properties in the City of Easton to be listed as deteriorated property as defined in the City of Easton Resolution Number 11-2018, pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended and Act 42 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended. Ms. Zirinsky and Mr. Myers introduced this ordinance at the June 17th, 2021 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this matter? Are there any questions or discussion from council regarding this matter?
Just a comment, this was brought up in the Finance Committee and twice now, so.
Any other?
Discussed.
Mr., I'm looking. You're thinking?
Yeah, no, I'm waiting.
I didn't know if that was a way.
Yeah, again, I said some of these things at the committee meeting, and I think there's a lot of good properties that the mayor wants to add. Some of them are questionable. But the one that really stood out to me was this one, I believe it's 121 to 127 North Hampton Street that recently sold for $2 million. And I've just had a hard time swallowing giving a tax break to a developer who just paid $2 million for a property. So, you know, and then it also goes back to the issue that Mrs. Ferraro brought up a couple of weeks ago. We need to do a reassessment here. I mean, for a property to sell for that much for what it's currently assessed, even when you look at the common level ratio, it's under assessed. So I think there's a bunch of things going on here, and I can't give a tax break to a property that somebody just paid $2 million for. And I, you know, the Easton School District taxpayers are probably being, losing out on the revenue there. So I'll be a no vote.
Any other comments or questions?
Can I just respond to him?
You could have a comment or question regarding.
I will have a comment regarding what Mr. Kuzic just said. So you would vote for not everything just because of that one property, even though those millions of dollars might, like, that's what the property is valued at, but the use and the benefit for the city could be exponentially more, which is why it's giving that benefit of being in this ordinance. Like, the reason why it's there is not because it's valued at $1 or $2 million, but because of what it can do for the community if it is developed. So the reason why it's in there is because these are the properties that we want to incentivize to be developed in this area for the betterment of all the communities that surround them. So it's not just given a handout to a developer. It really is a benefit to the communities, and it really is a benefit to the taxpayer who now can benefit from whatever revenue is generated and jobs are created with that piece of property. So I'm going to vote for this, and I think that those two properties should be considered within this because even though they are million-dollar properties, the benefit and the usage has already been established to the community in our previous meetings.
Any other comments or questions? We'll have the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a correction deed for a May 16, 1977 deed as recorded in Deed Book Volume 564, page 326, recorded in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds in and for Northampton County at Easton, Pennsylvania, between County of Northampton as grantor and County of Northampton as grantee. Ms. Zirinsky and Mr. McGee introduced this ordinance at the June 17, 2021 meeting. Mr. Spadoni reviewed this deed and has a few comments for us before we discuss it.
I have reviewed this, and it's prepared to go. We talked with Assistant County Solicitor Corriere as to some pronoun changes. There is nothing in the deed that is changing that is substantive. I recommend that you pass it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this matter? Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business that council wishes to discuss this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into new business with the consideration of the American Rescue Plan funding resolution. Mr. Lot, will you please introduce this?
Sure. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan of Act 2021 was signed into law and is intended to combat COVID-19 pandemic, including public health and economic impacts. And whereas Northampton County was awarded an allocation of approximately $30 million of American Recovery Plan funding to spend on various relief efforts. And whereas the Grant Review Committee comprised of Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development staff and the county administration convened to review and make funding recommendations. The recommendations totaling $1,835,220 for 124 projects are attached heretofore and made part of, hereof, Exhibit A. Now, therefore be resolved by the council of the county of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved; two, that the county executive of the county of Northampton is authorized to execute any and all necessity grants agreements with the applicants, not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. So introduced. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. My understanding is that these have already been vetted. I believe everybody's here who can speak to that. And these were groups that applied last year, and we ran out of funds, but we had already approved them in committee, correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? The list of recipients is on, attached for your review. Mr. Kuzic?
Just quick questions. I see Tina is here. Maybe she can address these. We, I see a couple of lawn care companies that are in here. One is for $6,600. Another one is $5,000. Another one is $11,920, and that was just a quick glance at them. I guess my question is, is that, my understanding is that lawn care was considered an essential service. I know that the service that I use had no interruption at all. So I guess my question is, did, did they have to prove that they were impacted? And why the discrepancy between the three that I pointed out?
So when we limit the grant to 15,000, there were some on that list that you see that are listed at 15,000 that put 60,000, 30,000. The limit was 15,000. So we ask people to do what they needed. Things I've heard from lawn companies that I've talked to who have applied in previous rounds, they lose out on customers because people can't afford, for doing COVID-19, to actually pay to have their lawn done. So they're cutting it themselves when they're either working from home or laid off of work. So that was sort of the impetus. But yes, we do have a show of proof, and there is a self-certification in the application that they do.
All right. That makes sense. Thank you.
Mrs. Ferraro? I wouldn't run away, Mr.
Being from Nazareth, formerly from Nazareth, who's a missing piece.
Tina, are they going out of business?
That's because I live there. No, I, they, the build.
It's my favorite store.
The building is for sale, but my understanding is that the agreement comes with them keeping the business intact. So she's, she's not physically relocating. The idea is the building's sale is contingent upon her retail space staying put. And she knows, if, God forbid, something happens otherwise, you know, she's responsible for the grant.
Thank you. Just a question, because I heard it was some good sales there.
Probably.
Going out of business.
Probably. Yep.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions or concerns about merchandise that we need to address? Seeing and hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Lot? Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss this evening? Any county council committee reports to address this evening?
I'm sorry. Also, the, we had some great news about a loss, which is helping survivors of suicide, families and that, and we're going to get involved with doing that. And we had a presentation from Aging, and some really, you know, we got into some interesting topics there, but things seem to be going really well with Aging. The, the one, I call it semi-okay fact we heard, was that the state has kept the funding for human services flatlined going into the next year. And so someone talked about a hose, a fire hose shooting out money. It's not shooting out money for human services, and that's unfortunate, in my opinion. But, you know, we'll just have to talk to our people at the state and question with all that money, why some of it can't go to some of the most important things that counties do. That's all. That's my report and my little sermon to go with it.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Any other liaison reports this evening?
Yeah, Planning Commission met last Thursday. Plainfield Township is certainly stepping up their regulations and recommendations for some of the, the warehousing projects and, and things, including taking on a bit of a legal risk, but they're really seem to be adamant about it. At least that's what I picked up from the meeting last Thursday. And they're, the Planning Commission is now getting into this climate action plan. It's going to be available on their website, and they're also adding a climate webpage. So it was a pretty interesting meeting. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Council Clerk's report.
Let me ask a question. If the Planning Commission had any opinion on the proposal to put warehouses on a golf course, did they make comment on that yet?
Are you talking about the?
Southmore, that proposal that was on the news recently?
Yeah. I don't have an answer for you on that. So I'd have to inquire about it. I heard a lot of the discussion, but not at the committee meeting, so.
So they didn't put out a recommendation for or against? Usually they do.
I, I will find out about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't pick up on it at the last meeting.
Yeah, I saw it on the news, I thought it was.
It's, it is owned industrial, for, yes. But I'll get back to the group on that question.
Anybody else? Council Clerk report?
Nothing.
Council Solicitor report?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Was that Tom? That was so soft. I didn't hear a second. Did you get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Fourth, everybody. Go America.
Is this the first chunk of the $10 million? Fifteen, yeah. Fifteen, sorry. I've been to different meetings. Yep, no, no, yeah, first chunk. But, but we're still clearing up the backlog.
And as for the.